To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, I see we have no public hearings tonight, so the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the September 22nd, 2015 meeting.
I'm moved that we approved the decision.
I would just like to...
You want me to come in?
Yeah, on the minutes.
Okay.
And Michelle, it could be my delivery, how I did it, because I cannot remember. But it was actually Barry who went to that business downtown, and I think Barry, you had told me that Bill Aldridge had sort of introduced that to you and talked to them. Not necessarily me. I thought it was a great idea and that's something that central businesses are probably take over with awards and things like that, but I want to give credit where credit's due, and that was Miss Rouse.
If I have a change, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion second. Will stop, so you're ready?
Could I get the second on that?
Just tell her.
That's me.
Councilman Bishop. Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Here.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Councilman Van Huser.
Aye.
I have five eyes and a yip, so I guess that's six eyes.
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. We have no recognitions tonight, and I believe, very good. Citizens hearing, we have a tourism update by Lisa Blakely, Executive Director of Tours. Lisa?
Do you mind if I turn the lectern around to face you all, or?
Sure.
Come on, come sit here, it's fine.
You're my chair, if you'd like.
Mayor, members of council, staff, thank you for inviting me in tonight to give you a tourism update, and this is my annual update. The Tourism Board and I would like to thank you for your continued fiscal support of this very young program. You supported the portion of the transient occupancy taxes, which is also known as the bed tax, and is paid by visitors which stay in our lodging establishments within the towns of Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and the county. This illustration just shows what these tax dollars do. It fuels the engine of bringing travelers into our area, having them part with more of their dollars, and that results in tax revenues and jobs. It's through these dollars that we market the area, support the local hospitality and tourism businesses, and facilitate the product development for future growth, all with the ultimate goal of injecting new dollars into our community, more tax revenue for citizen services, creation of jobs both direct and indirect, and increase the quality of life for our citizens. This presentation is focused on fiscal year 14 because that was the last whole year that was reported and shared with our office from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. However, this presentation will be within the context of FY 13 through 15 for trending purposes. So, we do not have empirical data as of yet as to the number, concrete number of visitors to all of Montgomery County, but in 2014, largely because I get questioned on it a lot and also applying for grants, those grantors look for benchmarks, and that is our baseline of what we have, what is now, and what we expect as a result of any funding dollars that we get and correlated marketing initiatives. So, we, for lack of any empirical data, have used a methodology just kind of internally to estimate in 2014, we had around 700,000 visitors. That could be more, probably not less. But we use several sources for that. That included the Virginia Tech football study that was just released this year. We have talked to the Christiansburg Aquatics Center, to the Parks and Rec Department, looking at the tournaments that came into our area that draw. The Super Bowl, the New River Valley Super Bowl, had thousands of bowlers in and spectators through the months of June and July. We know that there's corporate business in the area. We also know that there's plenty of entertainment and shopping in our area, and people come here for that primary purpose. We also have a big old interstate coming right through our area. We know that through VDOT numbers, that there's a percentage of those folks that will get off of the interstate, they may stay for a little while, they may stay just long enough to gas up and catch a meal, but they're coming in and they're dropping dollars in our area. So, there's many different sources, and we took our best guess. We're hoping that we'll be able to get some of that empirical research done if we are awarded, hopefully after this cycle that we've recently applied for, some research done on a visitor profile. So, stay tuned for that one. And this illustrates just how those dollars come in through our travelers, and they spend money on fuel, or maybe car repairs, or public transportation, they're spending money on entertainment, lodging, purchasing food, and then towards the bottom part of this illustration, it just shows where those dollars are converted into tax revenue, and it helps provide services for our citizens, and also provides jobs both direct within the industry and also indirect through suppliers and vendors and so forth. So, the 2014 numbers are in from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. Those numbers were derived and reported by the U.S. Travel Association, which collects numbers and reports for many of the states, thirty-some states within the U.S. Statewide, these are our numbers, I won't read them off, but they're pretty large numbers. Again, that is statewide, and that is directly attributed to tourism spending and the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, what does that look like for us in Montgomery County? I would say that, let you know that this is Montgomery County. The BTC does not break it out into towns as far as reporting on expenditures. So, a total visitor spending throughout the county in both towns was 136.3 million, and then so on and so forth with jobs and state and local taxes. So, in Montgomery County, there's a combined a little better than eight million with state and local taxes that are generated from visitor spending. What does that mean? And I forgot to bring my big check, but normally, if you do a little simple arithmetic, you take that combined state and local figure, and you divide it by the number of households in Montgomery County. And for 2014, what that would mean is each household, not citizen, but household, in Montgomery County basically got $233.60. They didn't get it in the mail, but they got it in the form of taxes that would have been paid if it were not for tourism spending in our area. And so, over the years, and I look back from 2012, as you may recall, I was brought on board the end of 2012, and it took, you know, a good year to kind of get things, learn the lay of the land, and get some organization. Since 2012, we have been trending upwards. This chart shows travelers' expenditures, let's see if I can find the pointer on this. These are the dollars that travelers spend in our area for 2012, 13, and 14, and these are the correlated taxes as a result. So, trending upwards, that's the way we want to head. And this chart shows in jobs. I had combined them earlier, and it did some weird things with the numbers, so you can see that as we increase travel, travelers coming into the area, and their needs and wants are increased, and we need people to do that work as well. And then I took a look at Christiansburg specifically, because BTC reports out, and also in working with Val and the numbers that she collects on meals and lodging, I was able to determine how much is collected in Christiansburg alone. That's the only thing that BTC breaks out for the localities. But I show this just to say, these are pretty hefty numbers, and they're trending up in lodging, in food. I would say note at this point that we in the program get a percent of this lodging from Christiansburg, as well as the town of Blacksburg and the county, to fund the program. So, we don't see all this, of course, and we don't get any of the meals tax, which a fair number of localities do take a percent of that to fund their tourism program as well, but ours is only a percent of the lodging. Again, these measures are trending upwards. I also am able to see what we look like as a destination. This acronym stands for Smith Travel Research. They are a company I purchased a report from to show me the number of properties in our locality. It also shows when they were open, some that closed, it shows the number of rooms with each lodging property. It also shows how we're doing as far as keeping those rooms filled, and so on and so forth. So, this has been a pretty good piece of information for me. From 2012 to 2015, our market has realized an increase in the overall occupancy rate, and that is people staying in lodging rooms, from 56.7% to 60.1%. And the ADR, which is the average daily rate, that's the rate that a lodging property can charge for its room based on market conditions, has also increased from an average room rate of $83.81 to $89.30. And then there's another metric we use is called RevPAR. That's revenue per available room, and that takes into account all of the inventory, the lodging rooms that we have, not only the ones that were sold, but all. That metric has also increased from 2012, and that started out at $47.48 per available room to now $53.66. And that's not, we all know that there's rooms that are much higher than that on individual basis, but again, this is destination-wide. So, we continue to diligently work on the strategic tourism plan. We had five goals, if you recall, on that plan, we're still working them up. We have worked really hard to increase tourism marketing, and you'll see Irene, she is my part-time gal, she's interned with me, and she's done a great job in helping me, you know, get with it on social media, and all the channels are available to us there. But we've also produced this tariff map, I shared that with you early on, the hotels are loving this. There was a couple of gas stations that actually hit me up last week to get some more of these. So, we've got to look at a way that we can actually get these, continue to have this sustainable, because we paid for this out of budget to have it not designed, because we worked in-house to do that, but to have it printed and then distributed. We're hitting the burning little shoe leather to get those out and about.
Ms. Blakely, I really apologize for interrupting you, but just on that specific thing there, just knowing, we were at BML this past week, and just trying to figure out and find a map that shows all of those particular destinations, and there are really not a lot of localities that have them. Is something like that available online as well?
Yep, it will be. We're currently working on the website development, and that's been a little bit longer than I had hoped it would be, but I'm seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. I just met with the agency yesterday, and we've been in constant communication, but we did a catch-up, and hopefully I will have those webpages delivered in my hand by November, and what that means is fully designed, and we've been working on images and copy, and this map, getting back to your point, is kind of the crown jewel of that website.
Sure.
Because not only, you know, we know that people plan on their desktop, but once they're in the destination, they're mobile. So, we wanted something that we can put the experience back in the visitor's hand, that we're not simply putting static maps on them. So, that's a good question, I appreciate you asking.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so, many other things are going on marketing-wise. We're working on the marketing plan to launch, to basically say, you know, we're here, we're a destination, we want your business. And that's the focus of not only the website, but everything we're doing in marketing right now is building that awareness. There's a fair number of people who know who we are, where we are, what we're all about, but there's a fair number of people who do not. Even those who are somewhat familiar with our area, believe it or not, they still need to have that awareness built there. And then we'll be participating in digital, probably leaning more towards digital versus traditional when it comes to advertising and so forth, because we want to drive visitors to that website, we want to drive them to the mobile site, so that we can get the information in their hands when they need it, the information that they need when they need it. Also in front of you, we've been working on some other things. There's a couple pieces, a trail guide of the New River Valley. That came out of a grant that Montgomery County and also the other counties in the city of Radford in the New River Valley, we collaborated on that with the help of the Regional Commission, and so we're pretty proud of that, it's hot off the presses. It's out in our libraries, Parks and Rec departments, in our visitor center in the county building, and also we tweeted and talked about it a lot on social media, and people are asking for that. So, help us spread the word on that, there's more, we've got plenty more, and can get more of those printed. Also, there's a farmer's market rap card, which came out of a planning grant that we worked with other, Shulaski and Giles on the Ag Tourism Plan, and so that has been printed, it's been out for a while, and all those places I mentioned before. On that note, we are working on a comprehensive visitor guide, but in the interim, Christiansburg has a nice piece there, I see in front of Mr. Hubbard that you guys produced, Blacksburg has one as well, and so we have paid to have 18,000 of those printed for each of the towns, and paid to have them distributed at four of the state welcome centers and along the I-8177 corridor. And I check them, I'm kind of a nerd that way, every time I travel, I'm stopping in the welcome center, and I'm stopping along the interstate rest area to make sure that they're there. And I should have put a picture in here, because I have plenty of them, I always snap to make sure that they're stocked, but they do, they do a good job, and they let me know when they're running low, so we get some more in the warehouse. But I'm really hoping to have that comprehensive guide up and stocked in those areas next year. But thankful to the two towns for, you know, having those pieces to work with in the interim. Mr. Hall, you mentioned the website, and I wanted to share, this is in development, and this is kind of a sneak preview of some screenshots of how we see this site unfolding. There's ways to navigate, but we wanted to keep it simple, clean design, again focusing on building the awareness for this area. We recognize our different audiences, we recognize the challenge of keeping straight, you know, Montgomery County, and then Blacksburg has its own thing, Christiansburg has its own thing, but how do we all work together? And that's what the visitor's looking for. They're coming into our area, and they just want to know where to sleep, eat, have fun, and all those sorts of things, and take care of their primary business. So, we've tried to present it in this way, again, looking at building awareness. This little map up in the left, that's going to be a little bit more colorful, this again is a mock-up, but the way we see, that's one portal to get into a specific place. You see, if this were active, and you were able to hover over Christiansburg, that would take you straight into where this will also take you into, and then you have a third way, it's a navigation icon up here, to take you straight into a locality, whether it be Christiansburg, Blacksburg, or Montgomery County. And then, once you do that, then let's just say you're into the Christiansburg portal. At this point, you know where you are because it is highlighted, and it says, and here, these are rotating hero images. Right now, again, these are just placeholders, but we've identified three to five right now, just to start out with, to highlight, and then we expect those to be rotating. Again, I have to be, from my point of view, be a little careful in what we put here, because as you know, being a government entity, getting into the private sector, it may be a revenue kind of opportunity to be highlighted, I'm not sure of the fair way to do that yet. But the way to get everyone represented is through that map that Mr. Hall was asking about, and once you drill down a little further, you're into that map, and right now, we're looking at a couple of options. One is to customize a Google map, and one is for a totally custom map that we'd be able to do a whole lot with, that we won't necessarily be able to do with Google. So, we're kind of in the weeds on that one right now, just trying to figure out what would be the best options. And then, this is just a snapshot, it won't be as dark as it appears here, but a snapshot just to show some other options that would be available to the user itinerary builder. We call in this for students now, that's going to be a change. We've tossed around the idea of game day or something like that. What we envision for this is for a user to be able to come to the website, and whether they're here for, you know, a hockey football game, whether they're here as a parent of a student receiving orientation, whether it be at Tech or whether it be at Radford, whether they're here with swim meets, or, you know, ball tournaments, or any of those things, we don't want them to necessarily have to wade through a lot before they get to where they know they need to be, and so that'll be renamed, but right now, it's become a placeholder, that's what we see there. Media resources, that would be images and some information that the media could use, Marty. Newsletter sign up, we do do a newsletter now, I hope that you've all are familiar with it. We have a new one coming out, I think, pretty soon, if it didn't go out today, but we want our visitors to be able to sign up for that, as well as our industry partners, and then visitor guide will be available digitally as well. Oops. Let's see here. Okay, more marketing, this is to show, we had a lot of activity over the last two months, I tell you. Good thing I took my multibody, but, you know, we were out doing a lot of regional collaboration at Outdoor, this Abington and Outdoor Expo. Then I was in Richmond at the UCI International Bike Race. These two guys, by the way, are from Christiansburg. He is Maurice, and he is David Price. I don't know if you know either one of them, but they are bikers, and they were there, not participating, but there in the expo there in Richmond. And then bottom, we were doing a lot with the Crooked Road, Round the Mountain, Artisan Trail, and also Appalachia Spring. These guys are from BTC, and he's from the Crooked Road, and we got free exhibit space here, as we did for that bike festival, so I'm jumping on every one of those opportunities, free exhibit space. And then, I don't know, I saw some of you guys out at the Ag Festival, so while we don't create events, and one large reason is because we don't, we're spending a lot of time promoting, so creating events will be its own office almost, it'd be a full-time job, but we don't want to be in competition with the organizations already doing a great job with events. So, as much as we can, we get out there and support, and continue to build that awareness and advocacy really when we're inside the community. And then this last picture is showing, we had a writer in town from Recreation News, and it's a publication targeted to government employees in Northern Virginia and DC, and so she was in town Thursday, Friday. We got her a backstage tour, Mr. Ben Hoosier, I know you're talking about this, back of the house tours, and this was great. She, we'll get a great article out of this. We were not only in Blacksburg and Virginia Tech doing the whole back of the house tour there in their new facilities, but we were over at Christiansburg, we familiarized her with our mall area, we had supper at the Blackstone, and so we really gave her a sense of what we're all about here, and that is, we're great jumping off place, you know, we've got a lot of great things going on, but also we're well positioned for visitors to be able to take part in all these other activities around.
Lisa?
I'm sorry, I'm running over.
I voted for you, you're number seven.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Good. We actually took a tie for best dessert. We call it meat candy.
No, it was great to see you out there. It's fantastic.
It was a good time. So, goal two is building that infrastructure, and this basically speaks to, if you guys remember, a visitor center, we're not there yet, we're just not, so we're trying to do all we can to get this information out through the avenues that we have available to us. Goal three, I've talked a little bit about developing partnerships already, we'll continue to do that, that allows us to do more with this, and we can achieve more together than we ever could alone. And I know in talking with several other folks, like Brad from the town, and just when we reach out and partner with our universities here, and with those around us in the New River Valley, I mean, we're hard to beat as a package. Developing tourism education programs and advocacy, you know, most of the time, as a DMO, we're outward-focused. Our customers are 50 miles out or greater, but we also recognize we have the need to build that advocacy within the community. And so, we held a familiarization tour, or fan tour, as we call it in the US, back in May during the National Travel and Tourism Week. We chartered a bus from right here in Montgomery County. We carried approximately 40 folks, and they came from the industry, mostly the industry, Marty was one of our tour guides, but we had some folks from just, had lived right here in the community all their lives, and weren't familiar with some of the places we went out to see. So, I call that a success, and we hope to do more of those every year, maybe not as long, that was a whole day. We heard from feedback, you know, we enjoyed it, but maybe, you know, more of them, but half-days. So, we're taking that to heart and already working on some of the future ones. And then, goal five, you know, building a strong program and strong policy. And so, I participated in Tourism Day at General Assembly with VHTA, we are a member of VHTA, and that enables us to stay on the cutting edge for our industry, those restaurants, the lodging folks, the attractions, and I got a chance to talk with many of our state legislators, and impressing upon them as to the value of tourism and what we're doing right here in Montgomery County. And then, coming up, you are familiar, I'm sure, with the drive tourism that we'll be participating in very soon, and so I'm very hopeful for that. That is only, we're only looking at Christiansburg for this particular one. We are one of only 23, I think, Barry, communities statewide that were selected, or will have gone through this by the end of this year. So, that is focused on product development, I think that'll be a big help to us. That was a lot, and I apologize for going over my time, but I could talk a lot more, and we can do that later, or you can ask me any questions now, I'd be happy to answer.
Lisa, I have a quick question, actually maybe two. Number one, what would the web address be when it's up and running? Do you know?
Right now, it is visit montva, visit M-O-N-T-V-A dot com, and that will point you to the county's economic development website, a page on their website that talks a lot about the same things that tourists are interested in. So, that's been a great stopgap for us while we're developing this dedicated tourism site. We are talking about what you are LGUs. That's not a settle, visit montva, because as you can see from some of the branding elements, like that little notepad you have in front of you, our brand name basically is Blacksburg Christiansburg, and in the community, Montgomery County's on there. Outside of the community, we elected not to really put Montgomery County in the mix because it gets confusing to some folks, because there's a Montgomery County Maryland, which sits right down almost in Virginia.
Right.
That's a purpose for those two. We don't want to confuse a visitor or potential visitors any more than they might already be, so we're leading with the towns.
Branding was a big issue at BML. They had a whole segment that was dedicated to that, and we knew, of course, back home, that we were already engaged in branding in itself to help us get the word out for our tourism and that initiative, so it's always nice to know that we were proactive in that regard. So, again, I appreciate your involvement and your leadership on that. And the last question I have for you is, have you seen through your work through the Virginia Tourism Cooperative that a lot of localities are jumping on board with and branding their particular areas as far as driving this tourism, or are some of them truly falling behind? Or do you do as well?
Most savvy ones are branding, I mean, they've been at this game for a long time. The Tier One, definitely. Tier Two, that's like where I came from, Virginia Beach, Charlotte, kinds of areas, definitely. The Tier Three, the smaller markets, smaller to mid, many of them are, some of them still aren't putting money there, but we know, just being consumers, you got to get the message out there quickly to impart, just to get the attention. So, while some people think, oh, branding, what's the big deal, you know, I mean, are you a Coke or a Pepsi person? So, you know, when we're up against boom, North Carolina, you know, what is our brand? What's going to attract those folks? There's one last thing I'd like to leave you with, if you have time, it's our Brand Essence video, and that is not an external, it's for internal use, but it's one minute, and if it works, I can click on that logo, and it'll play one minute, to impart what our brand is, and it's more of an emotional kind of thing, but not for advertising.
Can you go back a couple slides to the partners that you had up there? Right there. Now, you know, one of the things we're doing is we formed a downtown advisory board for Christiansburg, so that's going to be coming here the next year, it's still in its
No, that's Montgomery Museum.
That's the museum?
Yeah, and this is kind of an older slide, actually, in the interest of time, there's been many more partners that have been added, but that's the, that's the mosque that sits under Center for the Arts, Montgomery Museum is here.
But I was wondering if our departments, like the rec center, Central Business, when it gets up and rolling here in a few years, or the downtown Advisory Board, and also Terry the Aquatic, I'm sure we're partnering some in there, but if we can all, we can, because you see a lot, Blacksburg Partnership, the BMCS, is that the Blacksburg Merchants?
No, that is, that's the Blacksburg Museum and Cultural Foundation, and actually, again, I mean, I could, I should have updated this before I came, but the Aquatic Center and I and the rec, we have been partnering on, on different things, and continue, and will continue to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm glad you mentioned the downtown advisory.
Yeah.
Because I feel like I was sharing with Berry, that is one of our challenges here in Christiansburg, actually, not just in Christiansburg, probably in both towns, is there's, unless I'm not aware of it, there's no restaurant association, and so what that means is, there's not one voice that we can talk and get things done, it's like going individually, you know, to restaurants, there's not a hotel, a motel association, that's a little bit more manageable, I have a list of those, I keep up with the DOSs and the managers, and I'm able to correspond with them, but having those associations like that to get to, like in the mall area, that would be priceless, to be able to, you know, really efficiently get, get some marketing done. Because I know during the New River Valley Super Bowl, when they had those folks in, I could have gone straight to those associations and said, hey, look at this group that we've got coming in, this is the value of the group, this is how long they're going to be here, who would want to partner on this, but I didn't have that one-stop place, I went door to door and went knocking and did the best I could with one person.
Thank you.
Lisa, that was an interesting metric you had earlier in your presentation about, I know it's sort of like fuzzy math, about tourism dollars in Montgomery County per household, is that $230, $233 or something?
Yes, $233 and so to say.
Okay, so that's interesting, and you came from a much larger market, Virginia Beach, and then, but do you have any idea how we would compare, well, something like Williamsburg or Virginia Beach, or maybe even, you know, Pulaski County or?
I should have anticipated that question, I did not, but I can get that easily for you.
If you knew right off, don't spend any time on it, but I'd like to know, you know, what do you get and a range?
Yeah, I can give you a range off the top of my head right now, I can pull that easily, but I can tell you, this number is, is much greater than any of our New River Valley folks, I've looked at, because I've looked at their travel expenditures.
Right.
Were much less than those like in the Virginia Beach, I mean, they're dealing with multimillion dollar budget.
Right.
And even in, you know, in Roanoke, they've got a $3 million tourism budget, and their travel expenditures, you know, all correlate, so, but I can pull those numbers for you.
That's interesting, though, per household, that sort of brings it down to, even though it's fuzzy math, but if it's fuzzy math, it's used everywhere, you sort of see where you rank.
Right, and that's the thing, that's, that's the great thing about this Smith Travel Research reporting on all these, on Virginia, and then 30-some states, because we can't compare apples to apples, where back in the day, our industry's been heavily criticized because of fuzzy math, and I'm careful, and I hope that you see it over the years, I'm very conservative with numbers, and if I throw out a number, I want to at least be able to tell you where that number came from, as best is my ability to get that number.
Let's do the one minute.
All right. So, at last, sorry, I hope it's not making you mad, you can click on it, it should work. Again, this is not for external use, it is an internal reference point when we are marketing.
Straight down right where you were. Straight down where you were.
Is there sound here? Oh, shoot. Okay, we have to imagine the sound really evokes emotion. You're going to see some places that aren't in Montgomery County here, I'll warn you about that, but remember, our brand is, we are well positioned for the visitor to come and stay, eat, be entertained, but also be able to have access quickly to those natural and cultural resources around us. And we are positioned between Jepson and Washington National Forest, the Blue Ridge Parkway, we have the second-ownest river in the world, and so there's a reason that people, you know, have a connection when they come here. So, we're kind of leading in this video with those natural, the naturalness of it all, but we know here in Montgomery County, we, they don't have to leave civilization behind. I'm really sorry about this, I will send it to Berry so he can share it with you, and you can watch it at your leisure with the sound. And the not, and the not disjointed advances.
The sound wire, when I saw we, we hidden the wires, is that one of those ones we forgot to hook up?
No, we, we have had sound in here.
I'm kidding.
Must be.
Go ahead and whistle, Lisa.
That's a great place to stop. Well, it goes on, there's some, there's some fans of the Christiansburg Farmers Market, there's the new bridge in the mall area.
No, I'm serious, we don't want to put a record in there. Both can all offer.
This worked perfectly before, I'm not sure, it always happens. That Smithville Plantation, Adamo, which is now White Barrel, in case you haven't heard. And this just looks like a bunch of steels, but when you see it in video form, it's going to be very fluid with the voiceover, it's, it does a nice job of sharing our brand. So, I think that's pretty much it. And that's not a great note to end on, but I will share that link with you, so you can, you can, you can be as happy with it as I am.
Well, Lisa, the trails out, I wasn't aware that we had these, this is fantastic, and I'm not just saying that, I had no idea we had that many trails in the general area.
And that's only a few of them.
And this, this is amazing here.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, thanks for your patience.
Lisa, I have just a couple of questions here.
Uh huh.
The visitor center, the welcome center, is there any update on that?
I, it's on our board agenda each month when we meet, as I understand it, we are looking at the park and ride, and maybe opportunities there.
We're hoping, if the, there's going to be two out parcels in front of the park and ride, I talked to the owner, and said we'd like to try to work with whoever builds there, says a hotel, have a visitor center in the hotel or something, so we don't have to have a standalone building, and somebody to be there 24 hours a day, that kind of stuff.
So, we'll have our own little, little room or?
That'll have to be worked out with the person when they develop it, for sure, depending on what goes in there, whether it's a, you know, a restaurant or a hotel, or one beach.
Would that, would that please you?
I would love to have a place like that, but I will say, I'm patient in that regard, I mean, there's been a lot of talk in our industry about, because it costs money, you know, first capital, and then to operate it, and then to staff it, so it's, it's on my work plan, and certainly, I would get in there and put in, you know, some elbow grease, whatever we need to do to make it happen, because I feel like we, for a market our size, we do need a receiving place for visitors, but I'm not so worried about it at this, at this juncture, you know what I mean? Because we don't, we don't probably, in the budget, have it to staff, like it would need to be staffed or a state-certified center, unless we could, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how, the creative methods we could work with in, in whatever project there at the park and ride, but.
Are, are business owners becoming, you know, passe?
That's the thing, I mean, I don't believe that they're becoming passe, I think that there's, there's a place for them.
Right.
But I have talked with some of my colleagues who run welcome centers, and it's, you know, they, they don't have the traffic that, you know, maybe once upon a time, before we had all this technology, and not that technology's going to replace face-to-face, certainly not, but the urgency of, of a capital investment at this point, you know, certainly, something I'd want to see continue to move along, but we've got many other building blocks in the foundation that we can continue to develop in the interim.
You know, I have always thought maybe of having, maybe, let's say, as a Hardee's, okay, and the Hardee's would be one part of the building, and then a visitor center would be the other one, be your, be your own people, you have your own little place, maybe with your own little meeting place, and people could just come in there and do that, I'm not sure, maybe I'm thinking too much, you know?
No, I would say that there is, this market is, there's an opportunity for meeting facilities, meeting space of which a visitor center could be part of, that's a boy here, but, you know, that's, that's something that maybe we can discuss in the drive tourism.
And you guys are, you guys are pretty much continually talking that?
Yes.
The other question I had was, I should know this, I guess, but approximately every year, how much money do we give to, to, to your office?
We estimate about $250,000 a year that comes in from, through both towns and the county, and both towns are right, they're pretty equal in what they contribute, the county is right around 13,000, it's negligible in that way, hard dollars, because they simply don't have the lodging properties, but each town is right around, you know, 100 and some change, so we, again, we estimate 250,000, dependent on, you know, the tax collectives for any given year, like, for instance, next year, probably the year 2016, the Homeward Suites down on Roanoke Street will have been online, and people in it, and so your tax collection's probably going to be more, if no other rooms go out for any reason. Blacksburg, we had Holiday Inn University raised, so that was out of the inventory for a while, so their estimated was down a little lower, but when those other two hotels come online, it's going to shoot back up and even surpass probably. So, right around, easy numbers, right around 250,000, again, that's, that's to fund the whole program, super much.
And the county provides office space, payroll, legal support, all the stuff that we don't have to pay for.
I will add that.
The whole office would have to pay for.
I will add that there was a fund that was, where the tax was collected over a couple of years, when there was no activity in the program, between when the chamber promoted and when this program agreement was made, and they brought me on to start managing, there was a gap in there to where there was contributions still being made and held in the, in the different towns and there, now it's all combined within the county, and that was roughly 400,000, and that fund is where we're taking the monies to pay for website and those kinds of infrequent kinds of things to get us started, startup funds, I would call it, for lack of a better term.
And you give us on an annual basis, what we, let's say, the, the three entities give you 200,000, and then you'll give us sort of a balance sheet back every year, I mean, I guess I should be, I should be understanding, I'm not.
We get that.
We do, okay. Yeah, and we go.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. This is our citizens' comment section, anyone would like to address the town on any issues concerning life in beautiful downtown Christiansburg or parts thereof, if you'll come forward, give us your name, address, and address your comments to the chair, sir known here to address council. So, you know, I will close that section, our staff reports, we have an update from the police department by Chief Marks Sissom.
So, in my life, I have always had to follow a great presentation. That's a great presentation. So, before I get into this, I want to make sure that you guys saw the media information we had out about stop bullying, October's anti-bullying month, which we're very passionate about, if you have not received information or seen information in the media about that, I'll be happy to send that information to you. Here to talk about the Christiansburg Police Department, I tell you, I think this is an outstanding idea, to have department heads come before council to brief you, there's a lot of things that you guys know about our organizations, there's a lot of things that you probably do not know, that's one thing I'm going to try to do tonight, is touch on a few areas that you guys may not know much about, and our citizens may not know much about, so, I was hoping for a big citizenry crowd tonight, but what I've got is, is good. So, we'll talk about, and I provided some hard copy information for you, talk a little bit about our command structure, I'm not going to go through every rank and file, but I wanted to have that, if you have future questions, please feel free to call me at any time, stop in to see me. I'll talk about the two divisions in which our agency is split into, and it's an operations and support division, first of all, just introduce my command staff, most of you know these individuals because they have been around for a long time. Major Reed, who has been in the agency for 25 years, is my assistant police chief, and then I have two captains, two captains that run our divisions, first is Captain Ramsey to your left, who runs the operation division, and Captain Derek Althizer to the right, who runs the support services division. Talk a little bit about the operation division, within that division, we have a patrol captain who manages four platoon lieutenants, four sergeants, 24 patrol officers, a special operations lieutenant, four vice detectives, which of those four, one is assigned to our DEA drug task force, one to our Virginia State Police Drug Task Force, and two vice officers that work specifically in the town of Christiansburg. We have a police secretary assigned to operations, and she handles our advice and accreditation. Support service, we have a detective lieutenant, we have four caseworking detectives, we have an internet crimes against children sergeant, internet crimes against children detective, a crime prevention sergeant, three school resource officers, an ordinance officer, a dispatch coordinator, nine communication officers, three police secretaries in that division, two are records clerks, the other is a records clerk, but she dual purposes as a grant coordinator. Well, we'll talk a little bit in the presentation about our grant coordinator and some of the initiatives that we, that we work very hard on in grants, and I know that's something the council's been talking about. Seventy-four total agency employees, 57 of those were sworn, 17 civilian, two part-time, parking enforcement officer, and a fleet manager. So, this, this is one area I want to talk about, that you may not have a great deal of information about, and that's accreditation. There's a lot of law enforcement agencies across the state who are accredited, there's some that are, that are not. Simply to be accredited is, is very difficult, it's very time-consuming, we're spending a lot of resources to make this happen, and I'll talk about why I think it is one of the most important things we do in law enforcement. So, to your left, you have Lieutenant Tim Brown and Donna Akers, who manage our accreditation process. I will mention that these two just received an award this week at the Bailey Act Accreditation Conference, and they are two of 23 in the state who are certified cap instructors, so they just received that certification last week. Accreditation, I'm not going to read all of that information, but I'm going to paraphrase that, and simply accreditation sets a standard for law enforcement to follow, they set a standard where law enforcement agencies have to meet, and I'll talk about how many standards we meet, 777 standards we have to meet. Those standards make us do things that we may not do every day, little things, but those little things makes, it makes us a better law enforcement organization, and better app to serve our community. Sorry, ma'am, I had to use 100 vowels.
That's fine.
There's the young guy.
So, the accreditation process, initially, the agency was accredited in 2000, it's a four-year reaccreditation process, we're coming up for recert in June of 2016, and that's when we'll be able to take our picture together, ma'am. Again, I said 777 standards, those two, Lieutenant Brown has other duties, he manages Those two, Lieutenant Brown has other duties. He manages our narcotics unit as well. But a big part of his job and 95% of Donna's job is accreditation. Another thing I'd like to talk about, you know a little bit about it, but I want to make sure you understand what the process is because this is a big thing. Our Certified Crime Prevention Community Program. The big blue signs that you see in town, that's what this is. I'm happy to say that there's only 12 communities in the Commonwealth of Virginia that are certified. And that's counties, cities, municipalities. There's 12. And only three of those are municipalities. So this is not easy. I think in 2006, that's one of the things I brought to council that I wanted to do. They have talked for many years about that saving our homeowners insurance rates. Now, that has not come forward, but we're still hoping that will happen. We were initially accredited in 2010. It's a three-year process. We're due for reaccreditation in 2016. So we have this accreditation and our state law enforcement accreditation in 2016. Going to be very busy. Our agency must meet 19 core safety elements. Most of these are crime prevention related. And we'll talk about our crime prevention operation and how much work they actually do in a year. You'll be amazed. Because that, this program is managed by our crime prevention unit. You have a handout on crime prevention services that we perform in a year. You'll see there that in fiscal year 14, 15, we participated in 170 public events and gave 18 public trainings. The majority of those were given by two individuals, Sergeant Philip Townley and Officer Nathan Dell, who was our crime prevention officer. Those two gentlemen have a heavy workload. And they have a heavy workload, but it's probably one of the most important things we do in this community. Crime prevention, it's been a topic in law enforcement for 50 years. Crime prevention, to me, is building that relationship with our community. Being out, being at public events, letting people know who we are. So I'm passionate about crime prevention and that's why we're working very hard on that. The one thing I'll mention from these slides is that SRO Alan Klein attended the YOBSO, which is Youth of Virginia Speaking Out Against Drunk Driving and Alcohol. He attended a summer camp. We have a very vibrant YOBSO club at the high school. This summer, he was named New School Resource Officer of the Year by the State Association for YOBSO. So he worked very diligently in that program and has worked hard as an SRO. Okay, talk a little bit about services performed. What do we do? That's something we could sit and talk an hour about if we broke down all the numbers. But over 38,000 services performed in that one fiscal year. Those numbers include 23,000 calls for service into our dispatch center, 5,200 traffic citations, over 2,100 criminal investigations, over 2,100 investigations. Obviously, my four caseworking detectives cannot do all of that. A lot of our patrol officers are working patrol. They're still following up on cases. There's a, there's a lot to those jobs. Okay, grants. I know that's something council's talked about. That bottom number, over a half a million dollars in grants secured by our police department last year. We are very proactive in that respect. Our grant coordinator's been doing it for 20 years. She knows what she's doing. Her job specifically is to seek out, find grants, apply for grants, manage the grant afterward.
Chief, that, this is for a one-year period?
That's for a one-year period.
And asset forfeiture, that civil forfeiture, they have a-
No, that, the asset forfeiture transfer program-
Yes.
As soon as I say that, Val starts to cringe because I got her in the middle of this one. So simply what that is, is a partnership with us and the Mental Health Association-
Okay.
-to provide less lethal weapons, training, and other things for access in mental health situations.
Okay.
So we are the fiscal agent for that grant. That's why Val's cringing. Because we have to manage that for all the agencies in this region to spend that money. That 452 is not Christiansburg Police. That's our regional money. But it, we secured the grants. There is my grant line.
So has something to do with civil forfeitures or anything like that for someone to a criminal case? Just, okay.
That's a, that's a DOJ federal grant. So that's something we're proactive in. We'll continue to be proactive in grants because I think that saves our municipality money. And we're going to continue to do that.
We'll improve best now. What percentage of your people have that?
Everyone. By policy, they're mandated to wear those if they're in patrol capacity.
Will they take it in the car with them?
They wear it. It's worn under their, under their uniform.
Oh, really?
Okay, narcotics investigations. We talked about where I have our folks. We've got a member on the DEA drug task force, one on the state police. That is very important regionally. There's a lot, a lot of things that flow in and around us through our organization. And to have those federal and state contacts is very important. Just last year in our municipality, just a few things I'll point out. 12 meth labs, which is down from 22 last year. So we're pleased about that. But we're still working hard on that because that's a problem in our community. I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's not. Methamphetamines is a problem here. It's a problem in southwest Virginia. And we're going to continue to be very proactive in that respect to rid our community of that. One, one thing that sticks out to me here is we have 207 active narcotic cases under or pending indictment at this time. That's a lot of cases for gentlemen who work sometimes day and night. 16 postal interdictions. One thing you guys, you know, we have canines. And we'll talk about those in a minute. We do a lot of postal interdiction. There's a lot of marijuana, heroin, cocaine coming through UPS, FedEx, and the US Postal Service. So we work with them monthly to run their substations with our canines to try to interdict any kind of narcotics that's coming into our jurisdiction. The bottom part of that slide is 667 hours of surveillance and 164 hours of interdiction conducted in that year period.
What does that mean, hours of surveillance?
Surveillance would be, for instance, we get information that someone is selling narcotics, causing disruption. Our units may have to sit on a location for a week at a time to document in order to have probable cause for a search warrant or- Outside overtime and reimbursement. I put this in because it, this seems to come up every budget cycle. When my budget comes through, my budget says 165,000 for overtime, there's always a question about 165,000. That's a lot of money for overtime. And yes, I would ask that same question. This slide shows that we work a lot of outside overtime that's reimbursed back to the municipality. In one year, we worked almost 3,000, 3,000 hours of outside overtime. And when I say outside overtime, which you take football games, Belk, Walmart, Blue Ridge Church, VDOT, an array. We have a different array of outside overtime, which gives our officers an opportunity to earn overtime money. But that money comes back into the municipality. But I have to budget for that upfront as, as an expenditure line item. Okay, our canines, I will tell you upfront. Our dog on the left, which is Owen, is broke. He broke a foot and he's just about back up to speed. And my handler on the right is broke. He's, he's about back up to speed. So, so July 13 through September 2015, the dog and his handlers, over 700 hours of training. These are and can be liabilities in the law enforcement culture. That's why we train. That's why these gentlemen are as up to speed with their job as anybody we have. Because the end return for canines surely outweighs any liability. The one thing I will tell you, we run citizen police academies, teen police academies, and some, some have been in our academies. That's the first thing they want to see. People want to see our dogs. That's a great community relation to them. We let them see our dogs. Now, they're German Malinois's and they're a little hyper and they're intimidating at times. But they are a great animal. In this time period, those animals have been deployed 136 times. When I talk about deployment, that could be locker searches at the school, which the school asks us to do, vehicle searches, human tracks, and even suspect apprehension. Probably one of the hottest topics in law enforcement today, and you guys may, you talked about this at the BML conference. I couldn't imagine that it didn't come up. And that's body cameras on police officers. Most of you know that we have in-car cameras in every police vehicle that we have. It's an expensive tool, but we have to have that in today's environment. The body camera pilot, there's been a heavy push nationwide to implement body cameras on every police officer in America. I'm not telling you that I disagree with that. I'm telling you how I plan to approach that is to do a one-year study, to do a one-year pilot on the body cameras. We do have seven body cameras that are in. We have just finalized the policy. In November, we plan to deploy those seven and do a pilot study for one year.
Chief, how, how heavy is a body camera?
It's, it's not heavy.
So it doesn't, it doesn't-
It's about that big.
Where's it, where, what on the?
You have to wear it on a little pill.
Okay. So that's, that doesn't infringe upon your ability to movement and stuff like that at all?
It will be awkward for a while, for me, I would imagine. But, you know, that year's going to give us an opportunity to evaluate some of the things that we're going to need. It's a big budget item. You know, my estimation is over a quarter of a million dollars to outfit the entire agency with body cameras. So I want to make sure I do my research and we have documentation for me to bring to council during budget work session to say, here's what it's going to cost, here's the pros and cons, and give you my best evaluation.
Probably involve some other things like additional training and stuff like that that you'll detect through the study, as you may need.
And the hardware, the storage space, records retention, those are some big issues.
Yep. You're going to probably hold those for a certain timeframe as well, private pursuant to any investigation and arrest.
If it's a criminal investigation that has not been solved, we may have to hold that forever.
That's right.
So, but I will tell you that my perspective on body cameras and in-car cameras, and it's always been this, I want that. Even as a police officer on the street, I wanted that. That many times helped me diffuse situations. And it, and it holds us accountable. It holds us accountable. It holds the citizen accountable. And I think it's productive and I think it's a good thing for law enforcement. We just have to talk about how we implement it and how we afford it. Now, here's where I normally talk for about 30 minutes. Mr. Tom came through our police academy. He knows I get pretty pumped up about strategic planning. I have, I've provided you a document on strategic planning. What that is, is our, the core of our plan. It's our goals and objectives. I am so passionate about goals and objectives and I believe in them. Every new employee, day two, they, they're making the same. I'm going over our goals and objectives with them. On day two, at the end of that day, they should know every vision that not I have, but as an organization, we have moving forward in the next three years. So strategic planning is important to our organization. There's, I would say there's less than 50% law enforcement agencies in America do strategic planning vibrantly. But it's, it's the right thing to do. It helps us stay on track. It helps us plan for the future. It helps me during budget work session because I know what we need. How we get to that point and the one thing about how this is put together is interesting to most. And I stole this from, from an old Army Colonel who's 80 years old, who still works for me, that does our strategic planning. You have to incorporate your people. Your people have to have a say in what your vision is going to be organizationally. So every year in the March staff meeting, each area within our organization receives an email that says, by next staff meeting, your division will have two goals or two things within the organization that need to be improved. So those come up, which means we have 20. The next month's staff meeting, we review those and we narrow it to the top five priorities. And then the command staff implements those into our strategic plan. So our trues, people that have been on the job for six months, can make a recommendation and see that make it into our goals and objectives for the next three years. So we have great buy-in. Our new employees know where our plan is moving forward. And I won't go all the way through that. I'll just kind of show you how that's laid out. For example, if you look on page one, which is the index, if there's an area in there that interests you, let's say under training 4.6, that would be on page eight. You can turn to that and you can see what, what steps we have made over the past two years to try to meet that objective. So take that home. If you have questions about it, get a call. If you come by and see me, I'd be happy to explain that. And that's the shortest I've ever spoke on that. So that concludes the presentation. I'm open for any questions that you may have about our organization or my vision.
I have two things. I, I guess I should be congratulating all the police force, maybe not just you, maybe my company, on how this fly situation was handled. And we made the principal of Christiansburg High School, but it seemed like all of you worked together well. And I think that, you know, a tricky situation, in my opinion, was held very well handled. The other question I have is, we talked last spring about hiring an officer for the two elementary, elementary schools. And has that gone through or is that going in process right now? Can you, can you give me an update on that?
Well, I can tell you that we hired them and they're working in the elementary schools.
Okay.
Don't play around with Bushmore. That's what you really think, man.
Chief, don't you, but every, everything, and you think, oh, we, we did, I believe we, we hired one. Is that right?
That's right.
And you do feel that's going well and, and that things are going in the right direction on that.
Yes, sir.
And the kids are, the kids are getting something out of it. And I know the mothers are, you know.
Chief, I've got one quick comment for you. The, at BML, I may have drawn the short straw. And I went to a particular conference, which really I didn't think impacted Christiansburg at all. But I found it extremely interesting what I, once I got in there. And it was about the investigations for your, like, basically like direct task force, but it was looking at motels and motel rooms and extended stay. And once it's over a certain period of time and they've, and it was very, very interesting. And it was actually put on by a police chief in an area above Richmond. And they were talking about ways in which there, the occurrence of cost and expenses related to that, and what their locale is trying to do. And they talked about meth and, and, and trying to, I forgot the appropriate term, but when you go and you're trying to rectify a methamphetamine situation where you have to, there's costs incurred. And it gave me an opportunity, very, very proud opportunity to mention about Christiansburg, about our meth lab policy and what we've put in place many years ago with Mr. Helms. Well, after the meeting was over, I walked up to shake his hand and he looked at me and I had my little badge on, if you will, whatever it was. And he said, oh, Mark Sisson, I know him real well. And immediately, and I'm, okay, yeah, that's, that's right, chief. That's right. Took me a second. He, he hooked and kicked, got me off guard. But apparently he's been in contact with you about the way they're actually implementing their procedures. I guess their, their SOPs for how they're dealing with that issue, even though it doesn't exactly impact us. I'm not trying to toot your horn, but it was nice to know that they're reaching out to the town of Christiansburg, Certified Crime Prevention Community, to asking how we do those things, how we're dealing with that. And, but he was very quick to mention you and to mention that he's spoken with you numerous times. And unfortunately, I can't remember the name.
Yeah, Cole Heffernan.
It may have been. I can't remember his name. Super nice guy.
I'll, I'll look it up. I've got the-
But he was very appreciative of the efforts of being able to call you directly and speak with you on that topic. So again, it's a very proud moment for Christiansburg, in my opinion, that we're thought of that way amongst crime prevention models across the state. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Make a short comment. It's not a question. We all know what we have in Chief Sisson and we know the tone that he's set, been walking the talk, so to speak, as examples with others. But just this evening, we see the advertisement for the Fall Festival this weekend in light of, you know, what's going on across our country. I think the partnerships you forged in the past and even right now, just tonight was another example of the type of programs that you're doing. He teamed with the NAACP for the Fall Festival this Saturday. There's a saying we have in the consulting business, I don't care how much you know until I know how much you care. And, and you, you and your staff are clearly setting, you know, the right tone for not only crime prevention, but also just, you know, the people- for not only crime prevention, but also just, you know, the people, and I think most citizens of Christiansburg, just during their tenure, evidently they tell a big difference in the approachability and so forth. And they're scared of you guys. I mean, Christiansburg isn't placing monkey around, people know that. So I didn't mean to go on it, but I think the direction you've taken the department so far, the trajectory, so to speak, and all that is very clear to me, anyway, I'm just one person, but it's very clear to me. And this, again, this evening is just one other example of that.
And Mayor, the Help Said The Next Girl is also affiliated with the October seventeenth, so that's another way you partner with our young people.
Mark, we're very proud of you and your department. You have, you provide a constant source of leadership, you have a good command staff, and you work well as a team. So I'm half counsel and citizens, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Discussions by Mayor and council members. Town council's intention to adopt an ordinance in regards to a rezoning request by George Smith, agent for Pepper's Ferry Investments LLC. The property located at nine fifteen Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest, tax parcel four thirty-four-a- sixteen, from R. two, two-family residential to B. three general business. The property contains one acre, and is scheduled as residential in the future land use map of the Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Public hearing was held on September the twenty-second. And I believe that all this information is disclosed in your county council's package.
I believe that we adopt their ordinance as defined in the agenda.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion?
One quick mention, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe anyone on the planning commission was against this. It was unanimous for, except for those that were absent.
Eight, eight, four, three were absent.
Senator Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Huger?
Aye.
I believe that's sixteen, is that correct? Thank you. Discussion regarding the council follow-up task list. Mr. Bishop, that was yours, your request, and I will tell you that Mr. Helms and I have been kind of working on it. We found several things that have been completed, have been acted on. So within the next, part of the next council meeting or so, we'll give you the better updated list. Mr. Helms, is that correct?
I have some information, and I'd be comfortable over.
That's fine. Do you guys want to go over some of it tonight, or you want to have a work session on it, or how do you want to fly?
I'm usually not in favor of work sessions, but I think this could, this is worthy of one. I think we've got behind on some things, and we didn't really talk at VML so much about some things.
I think there's a lot on there.
I think there's a lot that have been, that's still on there that I think we've reached. Probably a couple of them, we may need to step up, and we did not have any specific towns or dates. We may need to go ahead and reach out to some of those.
Why don't we go ahead and schedule a work session, maybe one hour before a council meeting?
See, I agree with Mr. Bishop, that we need to look at this, but I'd also like to have that full, there's a lot on there. Have that full list that we can kind of review beforehand.
Sure, the work sessions with the downtown development group, are they on Tuesday nights? The next, will they be? Be for a while? So they need to do is look at another night for a work session?
And Jim, I do respect that an hour before, but I would say with that list, which probably includes some of our twenty-twenty vision items that we had on the list, and then we included it in twenty-twenty, I'd say we're going to be at least, say, two hours to go over that.
Well, you think we ought to go ahead and get the revised list again before we make the decision on this?
So let's make a decision on work sessions at the next council meeting. And Mr. Helms, now forward what we, the condensed list of things that we have moved on. Feel like that there's actually been taken on. So we'll get all that information to you. First time.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would move the town council into a closed meeting, as stipulated in the agenda, and specifically, a request for a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven-eight-seven, for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation and briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. In consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney or representative of the public body is in attendance or is in consultation on a matter. The closed meeting pertains to backcountry.com. I would make that the form of a motion. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Senator Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard? Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Huger?
Aye.
I believe that to be six, so we're going to take about a two-minute, three-minute break. We can leave the open meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to certify that the town council and the town of Christiansburg meeting in closed meeting, in the best of each member's knowledge, discussed on the public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting. And that is in the form of a motion.
I'll second it. A motion in the second, any discussion? Senator Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard? Councilman Scholter? Councilman Stipes? Councilman Van Huger?
Aye.
That would be six, so we will not, council will not take action on this matter at this particular time. So with that, we will move on. Brian, you got a?
I was asked by Councilman Hubbard to give a brief update on the Marketplace Shopping Center. I've been in contact with their broker. As you know, we've been working with them also for a couple of years. There have been some parties of interest in this region and parties of interest nationally. They have not made any deals or are anywhere near making any deals on that property. So that's really the only report I can give in open session. Over the years, various large retailers have looked at it, but have passed on our region more than they've passed on the center itself. When you have a retailer, they, let's say they're going to do a hundred stores next year, or in two years. They have a market of, let's say, a hundred fifty, two hundred markets. And you either make that cut, or you don't make that cut. In some of the past discussions, we have been bypassed on major retailers three times. So it's coming from corporate. And apparently, not as much on the local end or the owner's end as it is corporate end is to large retailers. And that's why Kohl's is now going into the mall rather than that site in particular.
It's not what I wanted to hear, but thank you. Guess we need to start developing a taxing plan to tax empty.
I thought you were the one that said the sound was on, huh? Maybe I misunderstood.
I think we can do that, but we can't be specific.
You still expect it, don't we, Barry, every year? We expect all the empty.
We don't go in on, but we.
You'll keep it. Not they have to keep it up.
Yeah, it's not specific.
The best, the best thing we could do, I'll say it one more time, when we say it, if we could, the town could make that a four-way stop at Shoppers Way, that place would take off, mark my words, it would take off. Access to that parcel is terrible.
Yeah, I think we all know that.
Now, there is one.
But if we want a project to work on, that would be one.
I think there's one good part about this. They have a new agent who was trying, who was involved in selling a property. Is that correct? And this, and group is, from what I've heard, this is what Charlie told me last July, that this company is a bigger company, and they are more wheelers dealers. From what I've heard, Bishadi is not asking for that much of a price range right now. Is it, that's pretty much true? Not that far out of line.
From what I've heard, yes. The asking price is about thirteen and a half million, which is a mean above assessed value.
Well, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
The marketplace horse is in a coma, so we're going to move on before killing.
Thank you.
Council reports, Mr. Bishop?
Yes, I'd like to report last night, Chief Hanks attended a meeting with the Christiansburg Groceries on High Street. He presented them with some safety items, and they gave him some, I believe it was stuffed bears to use to give children during stressful situations. So I'm just going to have his last night's meeting. That's all I have.
Mr. Hall? Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, three things to report. First and foremost, I spoke with Mr. Scholter, and I believe we're going to have a water and sewer committee meeting moving forward. I think we're going to be looking at some things we talked to Mr. Helms about before, but I think we might be focusing on some of the recycling efforts and be trying to bring those things to the forefront. Secondly, I guess, not second or fourth, but Mr. Helms, I hope that once the tourism gets their website up, that we can get a link to that. I just, I was on my mind the whole meeting, I wouldn't mention that. But this is really kind of exciting. This is something that I want to report on last year, unfortunately, with the bridge debacle, we couldn't do this last year. But this year, on the thirty-first of October, which is a Saturday at nine a.m., will be our first, hopefully first annual. It's Getting Scary on the Huckleberry, which will be our, kind of a, it's a fun run, it's five K. It's going to loop from the Recreation Center over at the Remva Noel Bridge, around the, pretty much like around the mall area, then comes back, but it really accentuates the bridge, because you have to go over twice. It, race day registration starts on the day of the race, of course, at seven-thirty, ends at eight-thirty. And then the race begins probably at nine. There's prizes for the costumes, there's prizes for the finishers, the different age brackets, first, second, third. But I think it's a great way to accentuate our bridge and kind of get into the season a little bit, if you want to say the season. But that particular day in itself, something great for kids as well and families. No pets allowed, and want to be safe, of course. But also need is that, this is, kind of demonstrates a partnership with the Montgomery County Public Schools as well. I believe that Shane Gwynn is helping to lead the charge in this along with the Recreation Center. And so he's actually the contact person with email. There is a charge, it's twenty dollars if you sign up by the sixteenth, I'm sorry, if you mail your payment in, and it's postmarked by the sixteenth, it's twenty-five the day of the race. But everyone is, is, I guess, requested to be there if not possible, and be dressed up. Mayor-wise, it would be great to have that, you be out there, Mr. Mayor, and to help create the festivities. But anyway, I think it's going to be a really great idea. I wouldn't do it last year, but just with the way the bridge was, they could not do it. And that's all I have to report on at this time.
Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Van Huger?
I don't really have much to report. I will say in the presence of Chief Sisson, that Detective Brown, and the person he works with, with the video pornography and so forth, will we make any presentation to our Kiwanis Club on the twenty-second? I've told you, he's only got twenty minutes, so I don't know whether I'm going to have a problem or not. But I appreciate he's willing to do that, and he is a member of our Kiwanis.
Very good. Mr. Stipes?
No reports other than to say I appreciate the council's company and camaraderie and relationship building at VML. We've done some good stuff, and I enjoy it very much.
Mr. Scholter?
Central Business, this is advisory, met again tonight. We're, Randy, did they settle on the area or where?
No, I'm going to have maps and, I guess, rough up, rough maps for people kind of.
But give you sort of an idea of where we're going with it, which I'm more of a, the smaller the better, but I recognize that, you know, a lot of times you don't get what you want. And it's going to be more of a, it's a larger area. It's going to incorporate the middle school, College Street, First Street. It's a big square, so, and that's where our downtown section, then Cambry is going to go from the Millions all the way down, of course, across the tracks, Depot, and up to the community center on High Street. So I think that's going to be our official areas for the advisory committee. But it's going along great. We'll have a lot of people, a lot of input, so be looking for a lot of interesting things coming up. That's it.
You know, I was just happy to see that the farmhouse is going to reopen in January.
Hopefully, January, it'll be, there's a lot of work being done over there from understanding it.
And I tell you, the, one of the owners is Roger Neal, who is a graduate of Auburn High School. And Roger's already been successful in a couple of restaurants down in Roanoke. So I think that this is going to be something that's going to open up and be a real asset for the town again.
Mr. Mayor, there's one thing I forgot to mention about October thirty-first. The breakfast is actually provided for any, anybody that wants to run, there's breakfast refreshments. And that children can come by from eight to eleven in the morning that day, and they're having a trunk or treat. They'll have that available for the kids as well. So it's more than just a race, it's kind of, again, it's a real true family day.
And not to mention a one-of-a-kind designed t-shirt.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Student from my wife's class design, so.
The only thing that I have, after a couple of weeks, I gotta send out an email to each of the council members. We are going to be, we are needing citizen representation on the cemetery committee, we're down to three. So I'm asking you to do a little thinking about this.
Jim would have some free talent a couple of months.
I don't have plans for Jim. Jim don't know what the plans I had for him, but I've got plans for Jim. But if you can think of someone, if you have a question about it, I talked to Adam downtown, he chairs that thing. But it's to the point, and Steve, you're familiar with it, but we're down to three people, and there's some decisions still need to be made. We need to get some more people on this thing, so.
Oh, that's for sure. I mean, we've had several people have to leave, but we've been talking about this columbarium for a year and a half, two years, and we are right there getting ready to order it and setting it up. And this is going to be just a, and it's going to be, I mean, if you're into columbariums, it's extremely interesting.
From a distance, I hear you.
We're trying to get into.
So if you have, if you have any ideas.
We have bargained, we have bargained places for all of you guys.
For those of you that would like to make an ash of yourself, we have a place. All right, town managers report.
I'm busy on the thirty-first, I'm in New Mexico.
Swimming Saves Lives Foundation Board of Trustees has approved a grant in the amount of fifteen hundred for our Aquatic Center to provide adult learn-to-swim lessons. So we'll be working on that soon. Travel vouchers from VML, if you can get those turned in, appreciate it. And the Recreation Center, oh, no, Truman Wilson Master Plan, I'd like to have a work session on that, if we can, during the week of ninth of November. They're getting the concept plans, they should, they're going to present them to the advisory committee on that Thursday, I think it is, before that, and then.
So Thursday, the fifth, are they going to present?
Fourth, I'm sorry, fourth.
Wednesday, the fourth?
Before.
So before that or after that?
I'm going to have it after that.
Good day, you thank to Mr. Helms?
Well, the tenth is a council meeting, but we have the central advisory, central business advisory committee that day. So Monday the ninth, eleventh is Veterans Day, Thursday the twelfth. So Monday the ninth, eleventh is Veterans Day, Thursday the twelfth, probably ninth to the twelfth would be...
I can't make it on the ninth.
And I, I couldn't be, I couldn't, well, you can't be on the ninth at all, Mr. Hubbard?
Yeah, I can't, no, no. Mondays are bad for me.
Twelfth works for me, sure.
Twelfth's good.
Twelfth, I think, works for me.
Twelfth works for me as well. You have a particular time, Mr. Helms?
Six, seven.
Six thirty-six. Quarter six, is six open for you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm at quarter here, so I'm, I'm there.
Six, six o'clock on the twelfth. You put that up, Barry.
That's exciting. I'm, I'm aboard with that. And you want to...
The regional, regional suppers, pass the brochure around for BML's regional suppers or Arrington, Roanoke. That's the two closest ones, one's the twenty-eighth of October, one's the twenty-ninth. The Institute of Boeing. You know or me? Hope Michelle knows.
Very good. Anything else to come before council? I'll entertain that motion, so we can...
Oh, I didn't have one. We got to go back into council.
Sorry.
Back in session.
Back in session. That was a fast move.
I'm glad it's got pictures involved. We got a problem.
I think I'm...
I'm about to resume shortly. Okay, got a letter from Asset Solutions Corporation, trading as Joey L Simmons and Company. He's asked if we would be interested in the lot. At the corner of Hickok and First. And it's this lot right here. There's Dr. Jones's office.
Yeah, okay, there is a house there and then he tore it down, right?
Oh, he did, he's...
Yeah. It might be.
And he's offering to us for a hundred twenty-five thousand if we want to. That's the price to, to town or anyone else. So I know my feelings, but...
I would say, because don't, a real estate agent already have it, right?
Probably not yet.
It's the one I saw, they got a sign on it.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think I've seen them.
Yeah, I don't think I'm in a...
I don't, I don't see that it's...
Just give them where it's located at and the signs.
I think at this point, I, I would certainly suggest that you thank Asset Solutions for considering us, but at this time, I, I don't think it fits within our, within our scheme[1789.94]